Blaze, you awake?
Good evening, everybody. I'm awake. Hello?
Hello.
Good to see you. So, okay, financial report. So, you know, exciting topic to talk about here to keep everyone awake. Uh, we've got financial report. So, uh, nothing, um, too major to report outside of what was on the summary sheet. Um, the major thing to note would be that, uh, we are in a budget freeze right now. We enacted a budget freeze on March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, we're hoping to potentially be able to unfreeze, uh, for a few things, at least, um, at the start of May. Uh, for context, uh, the drivers of the expense, the overages and expenses have been the substitute budget, um, which we currently have a deficit of about a quarter million, um, after the ARP support. Electricity, which we saw a, a major rate increase this year, um, which was a little over about two hundred thousand. Um, special education, uh, which we recently received the interim that we went through through the town on Monday of one point one million. Um, uh, that still leaves us with, uh, that was, that was a huge relief. Um, that still leaves us with a negative around about a half a million we're absorbing. And then facilities overtime, um, which after the ARP support, we're still as of April at a negative about a hundred thousand. So a couple of fairly large dollar amounts. Um, we've had obviously ARP support. We've got the budget freeze in place while we're cleaning things up, really organizing a lot of data, working with all the principals to go through a lot of our salary, uh, lines and confirm data and move things around. Um, and the transportation contract and and Elmer have really been, um, on top of, uh, tracking things, uh, from the start of the year, um, with some of the transportation things. And that, that recording of some of those savings, uh, versus what was encumbered at the start of the fiscal year will provide some, some pretty significant, uh, relief on that front. I would say that otherwise the school lunch fund is healthy. Uh, the universal free lunch program is operational. We're still not certain on a piece of the reimbursement, but, um, it's a significant, uh, still reimbursement. It should keep a healthy school lunch fund, uh, working closely with Stacy's team, um, on the out of district and monitoring the special education expenses. And, uh, working really to, uh, Dan Watson's been doing a great job with his team, really trying to execute a lot of capital and then also clean up, uh, some of the capital accounts and then close capital and, and return to the town if the project's complete.
Perfect.
Financial report?
Nice. I have a, just one question that'll let other people ask the question. Uh, you say we're at a budget freeze. When I deliver my check for six hundred dollars, uh, for the use of the, uh, stadium bathroom for the G Y F L, will that take us out of the freeze?
It'll take us that many more dollars closer.
Anybody else have a question? Christina?
Hi Blaze, good evening. I have a couple of little things. Um, question. On page two, we talk about that we have one point eight million dollars available in grant funds that are going to expire on June thirtieth. Are we gonna spend those or what? I know we want to spend every dollar, a grant dollar that we could do. Do we have a plan for how to spend that one point eight?
So far, we're working closely. Dr. N. Jones and I are working very closely with the grant managers to get that executed. A big portion of that is payroll. I was a little, I, I think, uh, I almost had a heart attack when I saw it, when that it went up from last month by like two hundred thousand dollars in the wrong direction. But a big piece, a big chunk of it, uh, Christina, is that we're cleaning up, um, some data that from all these grant accounts that came in and all this grant account funding, um, that happened, a lot of things got a little unorganized and there were so many new grant accounts being set up. So even just actually since this report was done, we've moved a quarter million in, um, grant expense, like labor charges that should have been in one of those grants that took a quarter million right off like the top. And we have a number of those that we need to move. So that's another chunk of it. Uh, that should help that out.
Excellent. Okay. Um, next question was on the general fund revenue. Um, our adult education is way different. Um, can you just talk about that for a second?
Sure. So on the adult education, what that is, is that we actually get that funding back. Um, so when it's, it's in its own fund and there's really no revenue budgeted because whenever we do expenses, we draw down from that account. And it then that's when it gets posted. They basically post it that, uh, as revenue. And I'm saying they, that's town finance when we request it. They post, they post it as revenue and then they increase the corresponding, uh, expense budget line. And so that what that means is that we've drawn down eighty-six thousand dollars in funding, uh, to increase the, uh, but the expense line.
Okay, great. Um, just as I like the way you've broken down the open capitals between the building committees and the non-building committees. I mean, you may have done it before, but I'm just, I'm saying it's nice. I like it. Um, on the ARP page, I just want to be sure I understand it properly. The two million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-three of remaining balance. Is that just, is that money appro, well, is it kind of earmarked or appropriated to stuff? Or is that money that we're gonna have left at the end of the school year or? Where are we? Because I think, isn't all the ARP money supposed to be spent by June, uh, I'm sorry, September thirtieth of this year?
It's of next year. So we still have another year. So the accounting is something that we've artificially made up for these three fiscal years to just kind of organize things. Uh, so that funding is not, it's not actually tied to a fiscal year. It's not even organized that way. It's actually just a lump sum from last year and this year. And then when the town appropriates the next funding for twenty-four, it'll be one more lump sum kind of added to that account. Um, so this, this is actually artificially made up. We still have another year to spend.
Okay, so I'm off by a year on the deadline. It's really September of twenty-four?
It's, uh, twenty-four, yep.
Oh, okay. That, I was thinking it was this year. So.
We actually, this month, just encumbered, uh, probably about half a million dollars. Kimberly Costoro, uh, I know, uh, has been keeping things really organized, our financial analyst. And she has been working with the grant managers, um, many of whom are there tonight, uh, Mark's team on some of these supplies. We've, we've entered about half a million, uh, and approved ARP charges about, uh, over the last, uh, two weeks.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, and then my last question is, is I know we went in and got our interim on the special ed out of district. So we had a shortfall, but then there was this additional S E S S required support expenses. Cause we're covering part of the special ed deficit ourselves and part of it was covered by the B E T or R T M or the town money. So could you just speak briefly as to the four hundred and twenty, what it relates to?
Sure.
So adding that to the shortfall of the one point two four one.
Yeah, part of that is just a growing, uh, number since then in the out of district tuition program. So it just being larger than the one point one that we asked for. And then the other piece of it is, and, and Dr. H will explain this much better than I, but is, uh, charges that are related to special education and required support services like homebound tutors, uh, certain academic required tutoring programs and things that are, and also some special education transportation, things that are not specific to the out of district program, but are required S E S S expenses.
Great, thank you.
Okay, everybody good? Oh, Karen?
I had one question, um, and it relates to the events of this past week. Based upon our bus contract, do we have any savings because no one showed up to work on Monday?
That would be, we have a, uh, a day's worth of, uh, I believe another penalty was, will be assessed to the company, um, of a full day's worth of, of no bus activity.
And sorry, Blaze, sorry to put you on the spot, but about how much of money is that? I mean, I know it's not.
Seventy thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, what is it?
It's about seventy thousand dollars.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you Blaze. You'll be back. Uh, action items. Uh, we, uh, I just want to say something first, that we are the most functional and friendly board in the entire town. Uh, and sometimes we mostly agree on most things and occasionally sometimes we disagree. Please respect your colleagues disagreements. They rarely happen and, uh, uh, and they might coming up here. So, uh, uh, may I pass it off to, uh?
Mr. Kelly, I think you, you skipped an item, not to interrupt. There was, um, the non-voted transfers, the thirty-one sixty was listed as an information item. It's financial staffing report and thirty-one sixty budget transfers. It's on the agenda.
I'm getting off. Easy on that one.
It's a separate, separate piece paper.
Yeah, but it's listed as an action item.
No, no, there's, there's informational ones and action ones. There's two sets of transfers.
Blaze, do you have anything more to say here?
There's two, uh, the transfer, these informational ones are what they are. And if we're, if anyone has any questions, I'll take them.
Okay. Any questions? Christina, thank you for pointing that out.
Just, just making sure we don't skip a new thing.
Okay, I'm gonna take my magical chair powers and pass them over to Karen Kowalski. Uh, we're gonna talk about the Hamilton Avenue field use request.
Thanks, Joe. So I'm going to, um, Christina, you can help me with this. Put a motion on. Do I read the motion?
Have to read the motion and someone has to second it.
So I make the, I want to do the in order. So, um, I make the following motion. The Greenwich Board of Education recog- recognizes the value of the Saint Rock Annual Feast for the Hamilton Avenue School Community. The board hereby agrees that Saint Rock Church is permitted to use the Hamilton Avenue School property, including field court and parking facilities for its annual feast in August. Saint Rock Church shall, one, seek and receive an event permit for park, from Parks and Recreation. Two, proactively begin to work with the T O G Risk Manager thirty days in advance of the annual feast. Three, retain or hire Greenwich Police Department for event security and any additional security subject to G P D's Greenwich Police Department's official request. Do I have a second? Joe seconds? Dis- discussion? Ms. Costin?
Um, could part of the motion be, when is the feast? Cause it says we have to work with the Risk Manager thirty days in advance. I think we should be a little specific on the date of the feast.
Perfect. I think the, the date for this year and, uh, Mr. Capielli can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it is the ninth to the eleventh of August of twenty twenty-three.
What? Well, I was like, the dates are in the document you sent the last time, right? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Father.
Do we have to?
Well, before you do that, I have a question. Oh.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I saw that the draft, we had a draft partnership agreement that was before us the last time, which I don't see here. Um, and, but, eh, so I'm, I'm not really sure what happened to that. Um, but it had a couple of conditions that I also didn't see, uh, included in this motion. So I, I just was wondering what happened to them. Um, one was to ensure that the newly improved basketball court, uh, the school remained protected and free from damage during and after the event. And another one was, uh, utilizing access points, property that were determined acceptable by the facilities department. Um, I, cause I know we're doing some work on the parking deck and whatnot. So I just didn't know what happened to some of those, um, uh, pieces and requirements.
So first, with respect to the memorandum of understanding, um, that is not before us. It is just simply for the church to use the facilities as described during the relevant time period. Um, having a memorandum of understanding, trying to get that done at the speed of that which this board sometimes moves, didn't make sense for those purposes. We can certainly entertain that, but given that that discussion and negotiation would take longer, it is not, um, nor did we do it last year. So if it's something the board wants to take up separately and regarding, um, the use of it, we can do it at a different point. But the motion before us is simply to allow them to use the facilities as they did last year.
Right, but to use them and based on some details, that's why I'm wondering why those two were left out. Cause I, I know a lot of, of time and effort and I, I think some of funds even from, uh, from, from the church itself were used to help re, uh, surface and, and repair at least the basketball court. And I just wanted to make sure that we were being cognizant of that, you know, cognizant of that. So that was one of the, it, it was just in the last, uh, discussion item.
It's not here simply because I think that the basic understanding is that the church will leave the facilities in the same condition that it had when it entered them. And there's, if there's, and if there is any property damage, that is what the purpose of the insurance is there for, which was, which is what they're required to have.
Right, but that's why you put it in the motion if you have, I mean, it's, it's a general understanding of that, but I think it makes it clearer if, if it's, if it's there. I mean, I, I know that it was, it's a big event for the community and, and supported, uh, as we've heard by the school and, and the community as a whole. But, you know, we just want to also make sure that we're, you know, dotting our i's and crossing our t's. So that's why I just want to make sure, you know, because it was part of the discussion from, from the, when it was presented to us last time.
Understood. And we've, based upon discussions that I've had, we decided to, um, modify the motion and given the fact that they have to have insurance and the insurance that they were required last year, which I can't imagine would be different than the insurance that they'll be required this year, would cover any damage that would be done to the field regardless, such as the incident that happened that was repaired. So with that understanding, plus they need to see, they need to seek and receive the necessary permits in order to use it, which is outside of our purview. Yes, Ms. Costin?
I feel like, um, it would make some of our members more comfortable if some of the items like returning the facilities to the condition that they were, were part of this motion. I think that would certainly allay the concerns of some of our colleagues if they're amenable.
Yes, Misto?
Okay, I, I would say that that would be a good addition. I'd also probably say just something blanket language around, um, following all of the policies and procedures of the Greenwich Schools. Um, I think that would probably, I know that it was mentioned last time. For example, you know, you can't drink in our schools if we had a more blanket statement. Um, I think that's very important for our school system. So I'd probably add those two items to the motion.
So it would be to have the facilities returned as they were before. And two, with respect to following school policies, um, follow, it, just, I'm just trying to capture the language here. So following school policies.
Yeah, I think that, that should cover it.
So I understand that, but I want to just be mindful of the fact that, um, and it will be monitored, but there, particularly because you brought up the point on the alcohol piece. Yeah, they, they do serve alcohol on their facilities, which they're allowed to do. And people do walk across. Alcohol is not served on school grounds, but people do end up walking across. And I actually believe that there are board members that also got a beverage and walked across and had alcohol in the facility. So I don't want that to be all of a sudden, they're not allowed to serve alcohol, but then they're attempting to police it, but someone walks across and therefore they get dinged because someone walked across with a beverage onto this property. And I just, I want to be mindful there. I, I have no doubt that Father and, you know, the police and Mr. Capielli, who are all running this program, will be very diligent in making sure that people don't walk across. But I just want to understand what the expectation is of this board to the extent someone ends up and has an open beverage across the street, whether or not that's going to have an impact, I, on them in future years. And what's the view of that?
Well, I can just say from my personal opinion, if it's being served on another property that is not school property, that's, we have no say over that. I think, I mean, that's fine. And I assume, because I know the discussion was that you guys were, you know, the Saint Rocks was going to be having, um, added police presence and so forth. There's, we have a no, you know, no open container law anyway in the state of Connecticut, I believe, right? You can't wander around with open alcohol containers. So I don't think crossing across is a, an issue, but as long as it's made aware that, I mean, I assume anytime you sign a contract to use our properties, you have to follow school policy and that's included in that. So, yeah. So I, I, I don't think the concern is walking from one property to another because they're hiring security and, and staff.
They are, and it's, and it's required. So if I have it correct, the two adds that we would like is to ensure that the fields are returned to their original condition. And I think we need to be careful what original condition is, but, um, because I get con- concerned in the sense that obviously we're providing, which we're going to talk about next, the sprinkler system to keep it all, uh, green and everything else, but pre-fair condition.
Pre-feast condition.
Pre-feast condition, using the proper terminology. Perfect. Eh, I, and I totally agree with you and I think that that, that's fair. And that the policies and, and that the policies, the Greenwich Public School policies are followed.
Yeah, and then you just have to add the date. That was, so you could just, do you want me to read it?
No.
Okay, you just have to add the date to make it August twenty twenty-three.
Allegedly.
Is that, is that, is that, is that right? So I guess I read this, maybe I may be wrong. I read this as something that, uh, we were patting this so that we wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be an, 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 an annual tradition here, uh, uh, at, at board meetings. So that's why I read this as written as, as the August feast.
Uh, our P T As have to come back every time. You have, I mean, you can't just give something in perpetuity.
Well.
We, we don't allow the P T As.
This is a, this is a unique thing, right? They're still doing the, they're still, they're still signing a contract every year and things like that.
They should come back every year.
My, my understanding is the, the challenge here is that, uh, Parks and Rec, um, won't act without our, um, authorization. So we're saying, we are, we don't have an issue with it. They, right, this year, Parks and Rec wouldn't even talk to them. They, um, but we're saying that, look, we as a board don't have an issue with it. The, um, and that's the resolution we're passing. The, um, I don't know if we need to pass that resolution every year. And if we have, uh, three years from now, if we have an issue, then we can pass it, we can rescind the resolution.
We cannot tie the hands of a future board. I would not vote for that. No way. I've been clear about that with the Capielli's, uh, uh, Mr. Capielli.
I was trying to avoid this, the, this, this conversation every year, which seems.
Oh, believe me, it's, it would be great if this could be resolved before it gets to the board, but I would not vote for an in perpetuity situation. That would make me very uncomfortable. Because, I mean, we would love to see how it goes this year with all the things that they're doing. Maybe it's great, but I think that we can't tie the hands of a future board.
Future board, the future board could rescind it. It's not a, it's not a law forever.
But that's, but the use of our facilities is an annual thing. There is no way that I would vote that way.
Look, I understand that, but I, I, I'm, the amount of time that this board ends up having to entertain this and as much as I'd like to, and I want to see this go. Okay, thank you. Um, would like to, Cody, I'll get to you in a second. Um, as much as I'd like to, and find talking about this, I'd like to talk about other things. So if we can come up with a way that doesn't, so that this doesn't come to our attention and that it's dealt with appropriately at the levels that it needs to be dealt with, then I'm all for that. And maybe the issue is because I think we need to get moving on this would be pass it with the language, but then come up with a solution going forward so it doesn't come to us. And it goes through the proper channels. Along, Cody?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I think saying that it ties future board's hands is misleading because all we're saying is what the default is. But at any time, anyone could say, oh, actually, let's revisit this and change it. It's just a, to me, it's a question of resources and time of the board. And if this is a useful thing for us to reevaluate every year, or if it makes sense to set the default as a yes, and we only reevaluate it if circumstances change such that we need to, which seems sort of like a logical, uh, efficient way to approach it.
Ms. Hirsch? I, I, I'm, I have a foot in both, both camps. I, I don't think we should be signing this in perpetuity because we would never do that for any other organization, including our partners, uh, in education. We, you know, the P T As have to apply every year, um, to use our facilities for whatever events. My point is, is that if, I, I think this is something that, you know, with the minor adjustments, we can pass for this year. This isn't something that typically comes to us. It came to us due to, to other things. We have a ti- time between now and next year to work with the town so that there is an understanding that they, the Saint Rocks does not have to come necessarily to us, um, every year for approval. It, it should be going through town processes. And we have a year between now and then to make that, to, to turn it back over in that way. It's without having to make this contract in per- in perpetuity. I think that that's a better use of all of our times because this shouldn't consistently come to us. It's, it's a unique situation.
Mr. Kelly?
Can I try to wrap this up by saying, let's, let's do it the, uh, the one year? And, uh, uh, because I don't mind it coming back every year because I get a free pizza free for every time I bring it up in a board meeting. So, uh, uh, so I don't mind. So could, I'm not supposed to say that. Sorry, Paul. So, uh, let's do it for the one year. Let's add the, if we need to, let's add the conditions on to it that, uh, uh, that are being suggested by the other board members, if that's okay, Karen?
Yes.
Okay. And then let's, uh, let's vote on it. I think we're, we're about to, I think we're about to get it done, Paul.
Karen, you can either rephrase it or you can withdraw, you can withdraw and make it as a new motion or just amend, whatever's easier.
Yeah, I withdrew, I withdraw my prior motion. Now I'd like, now I'd like to make a new motion. The Greenwich Board of Education recognizes the value of the Saint Rock Annual Feast for the Hamilton Avenue School Community. The board hereby agrees that the Saint Rock Church is permitted to use the Hamilton Avenue Field School property, uh, field court and parking facilities for its annual feast on August ninth through twelfth, twenty twenty-three. The Saint Rock Church shall, one, seek and receive the event permit from Parks and Recreation. Two, proactively begin to work with T O G Risk Manager thirty days in advance of annual feast. Retain or hire Greenwich Police Department, G P D, for event security and any additional security subject to G P D's official request. And four, return the fields to the precondition, oh, pre-feast condition. And five, agree to follow Greenwich Public Schools policies. Laura Costin seconds. Uh, vote, all in favor?
I'm in favor.
That's opposed? Abstain? It wins seven, zero, one.
Karen, you're still up. Irrigation?
I'm looking forward to giving this duty back to you. Uh, okay, great. So, um, I make the following motion. Uh, the Board of Education hereby accepts the donation of the immediate installation of the irrigation system from New England Total Landscaping for the Hamilton Avenue School Athletic Fields in order to take advantage of the full growth season and a fully executed five-year maintenance. And a fully executed five-year maintenance agreement, subject to any necessary town permits. And insurance as required by the TOG Risk Manager. That's changed. It's five years. Do I have a second? Ms. Costin? Question, discussion?
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Ms. Doe?
Um, so the contract that was attached. Actually went through twenty thirty eight. So isn't that fifteen years? It's twenty twenty three to twenty thirty eight.
Yeah, we need to make that change.
Oh, is there a new revised document?
No, I had the help of Blaze from this one, and I'm not blaming Blaze, but it is, um. So we would need to change the contract.
Okay, so the, so they only want five years.
Correct.
Okay, so then we need, okay, then I have a few other questions. So they're going to, first of all, I should start off with. Of course, we appreciate a gift, but, um, you know. It's like a child who gets a, a free house. They have to pay the taxes, right? And so, um, we need to make sure that we could pay the taxes. And, um, that's the maintenance agreement. So I assume that they're paying for the maintenance.
They will be paying for the maintenance for the five years going forward, and I think your next. Well, ask your next question.
Water, you think I'm gonna ask about water?
Yes, I was gonna ask, yeah, I figured water. So. Yes, water will be taken care of. It will not be provided by the, um. By New England Total Landscaping. It will be divided, it will be, uh, provided by a third party. Um, because we were working on these documents late into the week, we did not get, have it on the calendar. And did not have it in time to finalize for you, but I will make the representation. And I have a member of the Catholic Church here who will back me up on the representation that I'm about to make, which is that. Uh, water will be paid for, um, up to the first year, up to three thousand dollars. Uh, and then there will be a tab or a water tab. Put on to the system to track the amount of water that will be used, and then that will be paid for, uh, for five years going forward. A total of five years. So it will be paid for for five years. So for example, if next year's water, well, there'll be three thousand dollars. Paid for, and if the water use is two thousand dollars next year, there's a thousand dollars in it in the account still. If the next year is, uh, they use three thousand dollars, then there's one thousand in and two thousand more will go to pay for the water. For the following year, and that will be taken care of over the course of a five-year period.
Okay, is it, um, holy water? No, I'm kidding. So, um, so I could say I, I went to Notre Dame, so you can't, you can't come at me. Um, but I, uh, okay, that all sounds great. We need to somehow memorialize that, right? So.
It will be, and it will be in our, at our next meeting. I will make a motion to that effect with the appropriate paperwork. And. No, 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 we, we can't. It's gonna delay the installation, and we need to get this going for purposes of making, getting the installation for the growth. That's why we're doing it now.
Can, can I add a suggestion then? So if we, if we get to a. I, I think it's appropriate to vote on something once we have the actual correct documents here. If we're going to add an agenda item on Monday to discuss Central Middle School. Would waiting till Monday, can we put this on that agenda at the start, just as a? If, if that, if that, it, it by Monday, do you think that, would that be okay? That way.
Well, one, I'm worried that meeting on Monday doesn't get scheduled. Problem number one. And two, I'm, you know, I'm conscious of the fact that we're getting a donation. They're going to put it in on a weekend. And we need to get it done. And if, I don't know if this weekend is a possibility for them. I, I don't have that information in front of me, but I don't want to delay this. And I know the water's coming. I also know the church is not going to leave us hanging dry and will provide the necessary water. I'm not worried about that. I worked on that all day. Uh, Ms. Downey?
Um, two things, but I don't think they can put it in this weekend because you'd have to get permits and the like.
Good point. So I don't want to, but I don't want to slow the process down, right?
No, no, I should put to the point if, if we're having a meeting next Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday. I think we're okay, and it gives you time to document it. Because one of my concerns is that. The way this reads, and you're a lawyer too, it says that they will agree to provide the spring startups, et cetera. It doesn't say who's paying for them. That's ambiguous in here. It just says they'll provide the service. But it doesn't say at no cost to the client.
You're saying the spring startups in the sense of.
In paragraph three, says the service provider agrees to provide the following, but it doesn't say agree to provide them at no cost. All it says is they will actually perform the service, which is obviously, we would want them to perform the service. But if the agreement is that we're not being charged for the service, that has to be explicitly stated, correct? I mean, i- if we're not going to take full action, but we know we, we are, we could maybe take a sense of the meeting. So that there's movement forward, but obviously. We can't, they can't do anything, but you know, at least we have an adjustment to the contract.
Well, here's the.
People aren't going to support it, but it sounds like there would be support as long as the. Again, eyes are dotted and t's are crossed.
I would, I would call the question when Kathleen comes back. Certainly wouldn't be asking her. The motion.
Can I just make it, Joe, just to respond to that? We don't, we're saying that there's, we have an inaccurate document in front of us. So how do we vote on it if we're calling the question? We can, we can, we can accept the gift subject, subject to documentation. The, like, there's a better way to reword it and say we, we want to accept the gift and we need the documentation filled out properly. For example, just, yeah, another thing, um. The Make It Rain says it's twenty eight thousand. The form, our donation form says twenty nine thousand. It's just, it needs a little cleaning up, is all.
So to my earlier point as to, as to. To my earlier point as to why the, um, the way our board works, why we need to create a mechanism so that this is not an annual conversation. I do think, getting a sense of the meeting, I, I do think that probably I like Ms. Hirsch's idea of postponing this motion until. Early next week.
So. No, I'm not okay with that. What I would prefer is to make it subject to. Because I think we're all in agreement that we are, we, we are accepting the gift. And it's subject to some cleanup on. Some of the paperwork. And again, I think for us, the issue really is the motion and getting it. And agreeing that subject to the, the cleanup of the contract to make it sync with what the donation is. We are fine with this and moving forward. So I would withdraw the motion and make it subject to.
And that we would see the ultimate contract would be part of the condition.
Would be a part of the condition, which wouldn't slow them down in getting the necessary.
I'll second that.
Okay, so wait, I gotta withdraw the first motion and then make it subject to. So.
Good, take a second and write it out the way you want. Just give yourself.
Why, well. All right, hold on.
Well, can. Can we jump ahead to our next item and then come back to this when we rewrite it?
Yes, so I'm gonna withdraw the motion.
Okay, then we're just gonna jump ahead real quick, and we're gonna have the, uh, next. And Jamie, I am so sorry to have you sit out there and wait so long. Jamie and Sean, could you come up here, please? This is a donation. She's right back there, yes. This is a, I'll let them talk about it, describe it. Sean has spent a lot, Sean Mayo has spent a lot of time on this. And Jamie is gonna talk about the, uh, the donation.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so my name is Jamie Andrea, and I wanted to present the opportunity to give a donation to the Greenwich High School. Um, my husband, Chris Andrea, passed away in twenty twenty one. And after he passed away, we started a fund in his honor. And when I heard that the Greenwich High School was renovating their stadium. Um, we thought it would be a good opportunity to use some of the funds that we've collected to give back to the stadium. Chris grew up in Greenwich. He went to Greenwich High School and. He was a Greenwich lacrosse coach for the varsity team. And he told me that some of his happiest times were on the field because he was able to give back to the students. In terms of coaching them, but then also having them develop into young adults. Um, in the last few years, he developed a passion for. Film, videography, photography, and ended up managing the content for Greenwich High School lacrosse. So the idea of a broadcast studio. Seemed like the perfect mix of his passions and being able to give back to the community that he was so happy to be a part of. That kind of combines his passion for lacrosse coaching, um, and the broadcasting piece of it. So, um. On behalf of the Andrea family, we would like to make a donation to the public school. Um, for this broadcast studio in Chris's honor. And I've worked with Sean to. Fine tune those details because I'm not a broadcasting expert. So Sean is gonna talk a little bit more about that.
Um, I just want to say thank you very much for this donation. Um, it's much appreciated, and thank you, Joe, for facilitating this. Um, it's been a year in the making. I know we've been talking since, uh, last, what? November or so, trying to figure out what we wanted and what we wanted to do with this. Um, and certainly it took a long time for me to, you know, figure out what it was the best thing that we wanted to do for this broadcast booth. And making sure that, you know, the donation was gonna go, you know, be well worth like what you were gonna give us. Um, and I did take some time and Joe knows, I talked to multiple companies. A lot of people, you know, want a lot of money and, but I figured that the best thing to do was to get a box that actually. Produces a lot of the stuff that you would want, and it's a small box, but it comes with a lot of utilities. And it comes with, um, somebody that I can actually call and talk to about it, and just in case something happens. Um, and also, uh, the donation allows me to buy, uh, some cameras and also all the many equipment that has to do with setting everything up. So, um, it will be very well used by these kids. The kids are gonna like being in the booth. Um, at some point commentating and being up on top and, you know, working the cameras, going to camera one, camera two. And, um, you know, it's gonna be something fun for me to bring my, uh, broadcast kids out to and incorporate into the curriculum. So again, I really appreciate this donation.
Let me just, uh, uh, talk a little, a little bit about it. It's the, we have the seven, uh, coaches boxes at, at Cardinal Stadium. And we're taking one of those coaching boxes and we're making it a broadcast studio. And what just, uh, uh, and we're gonna have it as a classroom, and we're gonna have a class and a club and, and, uh. And it's, it's really gonna be a, an addition, uh, to our, our program. So thank you for all the work you've done on it. I, I'd like to make a motion to accept this donation. All in favor? I think that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
Can I just say at the end, a huge thank you as a, as a parent of a student whose life was changed by Sean's broadcast journalism course? I think this is gonna give so many students an opportunity, uh, going forward and, you know, in memory of your, your husband who gave so much of his life. Uh, to the Greenwich Public School system. So it's, it's a big thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Much appreciated. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ralph. Karen, should we go back to your motion?
Yes, please. I'd like to make the following motion. Uh, subject to the proper, uh, subject to pay. Let's see, sorry, subject to the proper paperwork updated to reflect the donation. Of the immediate installation of an irrigation system from New England Total Landscaping. For the Hamilton Avenue School Athletic Field in order to take advantage of the growth season. A fully executed five-year maintenance agreement for Let It Rain to service the system. The cost of which New England Total Landscaping will cover for that period of time. Subject to any necessary town permits and insurance as required by the TOG Risk Manager. Do I have a second?
What happened to the water? Well, I want to go get food.
The water is being provided by a different donation. And we didn't have the proper, we didn't have all the paperwork done in time, nor was it on the agenda for the purposes of this meeting. So we'll add it to our next meeting, which we may have early, as early as next week. But the water is going to be provided and paid for for a five-year period.
Well, as long as we have that in there somewhere, even if you don't say provide, as long as it's provided by an app, like. You don't have to say who, because it's under our, the cost of which would be under what we are required to approve, so it wouldn't necessarily need to come to us as a separate piece. The ca- the cost of which, if it's, if it's three thousand dollars or less per year for five years, it's less, we, we don't have to approve that.
Okay.
As a gift. So if you just put it as a condition that the, the water will be paid for by a.
Uh, okay, so you want to add.
But you could just say, you know, the, the cost of, the cost of which would not, you know, the water would. So that we don't, we don't have to come back for another meeting to approve the.
Then we don't have to count it too.
Yeah, it's not our.
In addition, that the, the cost of the water for the next five years will also be provided.
Will be covered by a third party.
Will be covered by a third party. I withdraw my motion. Ms. Costin seconded. I'll read it really fast. And then I'll provide it to you, Karen, later for the, for the, um, for the minutes. Okay. Subject to the proper paperwork. Updated to reflect the donation of the immediate installation of the irrigation system from the New England Total. Landscaping for the Hamilton Avenue. School Athletic Field in order to take full advantage of the growth season. And a fully executed five-year maintenance agreement for Let It Rain to service the system. The cost of which. New England Total Landscaping will cover. Subject to any necessary town permits and insurance as required by the TOG Risk Manager. In addition, the cost of the water will be covered by a third party for five years. Do I have a second? Ms. Costin? All in favor? Cody?
Yep, in favor.
Thank you. That wins eight zero. Thank you very much.
Not wins, approves.
Approves.
Not win or lose, it's passes.
Okay, superintendent goals for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. It's on as an action item.
Can I ask a silly question?
You may.
Do we need to approve? Somebody has to make a motion to bring it onto the table for discussion.
I, I will make a motion. I move to approve. The superintendent's goals of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as presented.
I'll second that. Discussion. Do you want me to say something? Okay, so, um, I'm not sure why we're doing this now, honestly. But whatever, if everyone wants to just take a vote on it and move on, fine. If not, I think it's kind of, you know, it's like. You know, it's a waste of time. It's April, almost.
I was about to say, we're, we're just about to come up. I was about to say, we're, we're just about to come up with a review, which is when we go over these. So I'm not sure why we're approving them now. We're almost done with the, the squeer. Unless we're talking about for, you know, a setup for next, next year's goals, but I, I just don't see why.
Or just to move us along, I talked, talked to Dr. Jones and she said she's pretty much good on all the goals. I kind of, when I was thinking about this, going forward in the future, we probably should vote on superintendent goals in a more timely manner, because basically how do we know what we've agreed on unless we vote on it? We can't just say
We always, we usually do do them earlier in the year.
All right.
We had a first read and I, I think CMS happened and we, we got distracted.
Would anyone mind, we're just kind of put, put this to a vote and just vote in favor of it and then move it on.
Okay, uh, very good.
Michael, you're running this, right?
So all, all in favor?
Okay, Cody?
He's gone.
Okay.
A vote.
Gone.
Karen wasn't here, so it passed.
Okay, revision to the 2023, 2024 school year calendar. Dr. Jones?
Now, the board will remember earlier this year, we brought the current year calendar for 2223 to you because we wanted to try that second conference at elementary. We had great feedback that that was very successful, holding those conferences in March. Ninety-four percent of the parents said it was very helpful. Eighty-four percent said they would choose a conference over the report card. And but along with that, and, and the, the ones that, you know, were kind of iffy, their comments were generally, we want both, but that's not doable, you know, with GEA. So I feel like they really found them valuable and the comments also from the teachers were very positive. They liked the structure where they had a full day and then an early release day. They didn't feel like it was as rushed. They liked that we gave them a Wednesday afternoon to actually prepare for those conferences. And then the other thing from the parents is they felt they were so much more, they actually felt they were more valuable based on their comments, because the teachers know their students so well in March that they were able to talk about what they might be able to do over the summer for kids who are transitioning, what might be good for them the next year. So really good feedback. So this calendar just makes that same adjustment again. If you look in at March, where we're changing a day there, the other thing that I, that we updated on this calendar is if you look at November the seventh, the election day, instead of trying to do a virtual professional day, because as you know, our teachers do not want to be in school any longer on election day. Two years ago, we did have our professional development, but we had some heckling when teachers were entering the building. So we've made that commitment that we will not do that again. But what we did is we have a request from principals and also from teachers. They always want more time. So we took that professional day and moved it to the very first week in August. So now we have an extra day to help teachers prepare, to get ready for their classrooms. So I think it's going to be really, really helpful. And on the seventh, everybody can go vote, do their thing. It's just a day off.
Christina?
Just, just a question. I, I saw you also, did we have the, I, I don't remember the previous version of this, the first day of Passover off before? Or that's a new thing too?
No, that, that is not new. That's how the calendar
That was there, okay. Just about the conferences, I just wanted to talk about. So I think I raised this last month. What if you want over demand for conferences? Like if, if, if the teachers find like they've, like you're saying, people prefer those to report cards. Will they have enough time to do them with only a day and a half a day? Maybe they do. That's question one. Question two is, does the marking period align, it aligns with the state? The marking period for the elementary? I mean, it's going to be a little funky for middle school, right?
They, the, the feedback from the teachers with the, and the parents was that they liked it in March and they felt like they had enough time to do it. To be honest, they really, some of them would love to change December. They do not like the evening conferences because it's hard for a teacher when you're, you're working all day and then you're staying through the evening. But it was too hard on the calendar to change that because
And I think with working parents, you have the opportunity.
Well, you know, but
Point of order, point of order. I'm sorry, we forgot to make a motion. Approve the revised 2023, 2024 school calendar as attached. Do I have a second? Karen Hirsch. Discussion. Absolutely.
So just to build on what you were saying about the evening conference, I really don't think it is the same issue that it was, you know, three years ago, normal pre-COVID. Because parents do have lunchtime, they do have breaks and they'll do them virtually. And you, when you think they're only, you know, generally about 15 minutes long, because just simply because of the volume, but parents didn't seem, we didn't get feedback that, a lot of feedback that they really missed having an evening conference. It was, it was very positive.
Karen Hirsch.
Well, you know, before we make that adjustment, I would love to be able to survey the parents. And I don't know if a survey was sent to parents, how they felt to get their feedback on adding the second conference, how, how it went for them. I know we haven't seen anything. Oh, okay. I don't, were, were parents generally selected or did it go to all parents?
It went to all of our K-five parents that went through the conference experience.
Okay, I, I don't have anybody in K-five, so I don't know.
And we got a good response rate too. I mean, we kept it relatively short, wasn't hard to answer and, and
Well, I, so my question is more pertaining to the middle school because we've never had a middle school parent teacher conference. So I know that that was being added and, you know, one of our parents had spoken about this before, but I want to make sure that we have an idea ahead of time, or you have an idea ahead of time, how those are going to work so that they're used optimally. It's vastly different going as we all know for elementary with one teacher versus going to a middle school where it's multiple teachers. So we want to make sure that our teachers' time is being used appropriately and it's valuable for parents. But my, my question then for the K-five though is I, I, before we discuss not having an evening, I know oftentimes there are parents that can't access the computer during the day, then I'll, you know, even if it's a 15 minutes, it's also very difficult. Sometimes digital connections or there, they have a job that doesn't allow them to stop for 15 minutes somewhere along the way, even if it's lunch to have this or the timing might not work for them if there's multiple people. I think it's exceptionally important, especially for, you know, you know, our parents to have that opportunity to be able to be in person in an evening if, if they'd like to. Sometimes they have questions or sensitive topics that they don't want to talk about in a position where they might have to like, you know, find a spot to talk while they're busy at work or whatever their other day, their provides.
Darren Kowalski.
Was that, did you have a question? Did you want Tony to respond to that or?
So, so what I was going to say is that
Late for me, sorry.
We tried to have a second conference that's in the evening. We're not going to have second conferences. I do not believe that we could work with GEA to come to the table and really get that agreement because it, it does change the calendar and it is really hard on teachers, you know, to go all the way into the evening and after you've taught all day. And, and because this one worked well and we got positive feedback from teachers and parents, I would love to see us stay the course because we did get a second conference. And that's something we all thought was really important. And again, it's kind of that, you know, compromise on certain themes and it's kind of like the report card versus the conference. You know, but we're trying to work really well with our teachers so that they feel supported and also the parents feel supported. And we've had good feedback from PTEC.
So it's just, well, I, so it's just the second conference that you're not going to be offering in person in the evening.
No.
Nothing in the evening.
We're not doing evening. We, it's all one full day. And then it is an early release day. So it actually, on your early release day, it's a Wednesday, so it does go later. It just doesn't go like into the evening, but it does go later. And I will tell you, to be honest, our, our teachers are great. I mean, all year long, if a parent calls and they're really concerned about their child, and I'm sure all of you have had this experience, your, your teachers will meet with you. But we, but there's a difference in saying we're going to have evening conferences and everybody must be in the building and be rostered. I, I, I think our, our teachers work with the parents if, if we have a parent that has
As long as there's an understanding, if there's, you know, one or two off situation where a parent doesn't have the opportunity to meet during the day, that they won't lose the opportunity. Okay.
Karen?
So since we're looking at the calendar again, and I talked about this before and since we're taking it up, well, this was, was with respect to last time's calendar. I just raised the issue again, since we would be in school subject to snow days on June 19th. And I did take a look the last time around and those districts that were not there were a lot of surrounding districts in the state of Connecticut that aren't in school that late in the time period. But those schools that are in school on June 19th do observe that day. And I would ask that for the sake of June 19th, I think it's important that we as a community adopt that as a day off if we are going to be in school on that day. And I know we talked about that there is the component that the governor passed assigned into law that says you can teach something in regards to making sure that there's an educational component on that day. If you, if the kids are in schools opposed to observing it, and I think Mr. Mercanti Anthony had said, you know, it's like the last day of school, really, what are we going to do? And I think we need to be fair as to what we're going to be do there. So rather than try to come up with something, I would propose we add that as a day off if in fact we're in school on that day.
So I did go out and look at Fairfield County. We are about the only school district, maybe one other that even presses that late into June and it's because we have the full February break. Most districts, so even though they show that they're off, unless we have a really, really bad winter, they'll never make the 19th like us. But I will say, I only had, after we talked about this at the last meeting, positive comments and, and from some parents. Because they, I think they trust us because when you look at what we do on Veterans Day, our kids are so much better with us than they are if we were out of school because most of them would just be a day out of school. And I feel like June 19th is going to be exactly the same. And we've made a commitment. You saw our whole curriculum team here tonight. We're not just planning one day. They're planning on lead up activities and they're already working on that. And I think, I think we're going to make it a really great learning opportunity for students and beyond just one day of information. And I, I think it's a great opportunity. Most of our kids, if we're out of school that day will not attend anything. And, and the families that want to go to a special, unique event, we would always allow that.
Look, I appreciate it. I just, I raise it again because I, I am concerned. I do think it, we need to send that message into the community that we as a community respect that day. I understand we're in school on Veterans Day and I know that all of the elementary schools and particularly, that's what I've had my experience with, do really special things on those days. And so my point is we're either out or we're doing something exceptionally special for that historic day. And that's, it's truly important. And I think we need to do it as a community, particularly in the divisive times that we're in, we need to show our ultimate support as an entire district.
Michael?
Yeah. I, I don't, I want, I don't want to belittle the point or belabor the point, I should say. The, I think, well, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. I, I think June 19th is a new state holiday. I am skeptical that it's going to be a day that we're going to be able to remain a school day for long. I think as this evolves, much like Martin Luther King Day and things like that, I think there's going to be a growing understanding in the community that it's going to have to be a day off. But let's see how it goes.
Okay, should I call the question? I shall. In favor, put your hand up, please. That seems to be just about, Michael, yeah, everybody. So that's seven, zero, zero. Blaze, you still awake?
I'm here, I'm here.
Excellent. You're up.
Hello, hello. Okay, so, yeah, I got to talk to Mike about my order and the agenda. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, so action items, we have two budget transfers. Remember, just as a reminder for everybody, for transfers require board action. If you're moving funds across major object code, major objects, you know, your 100s, 200s, 300s, 400s.
Blaze, I've, I've got to stop you there for a second. I think we have to put this up for a motion first. Sorry, I did not do
Thank you.
Authorized transfers for the period ending March 31st, 2023. Do I have a second or? I do. Christina is going to second it. Blaze, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Continue.
No problem. No. Uh, yeah, I mean, there they are. So that you, we, their, their board required transfers because of the dollar amount and we're crossing, you can just see the 100 to the 200. So that's moving from funds from salary to, to supply or from services to salary, making those changes, those required board approval. It's that time of year right now. We're actually trying to meet with managers, but really good. A lot of bunch of transfers and cleaning things up and principals and we're also with kind of everyone trying to think through their end of year planning. And so I've got a message at the host to save my video, but hopefully that's okay. And we just need Okay, so we basically just need your approval. So it's IT. The first one is IT. It's just covering the cybersecurity charges that are being paid for by professional services. And a second one is moving funds from 700s, which are our settlement, settlement account to help cover invoices at the deficit that we talked about earlier in special ed that we still have to absorb.
Okay. Either Blaze cut off or he stopped talking.
I'll take questions. I stopped talking. You can hear me?
I can hear you. Any questions for Blaze? I seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor, raise your hand. Blaze, you win unanimously. Seven, zero.
Thank you.
Passes. Good night, Blaze.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, agenda, plan, discussion. Do we, oh, there's hands up. Kathleen, you've been quiet.
I know, right? I have a question. Um, summer classes, did we approve that? And I missed it. Did we do summer school? We did? And is that posted and everything?
These, but not the program.
It's all posted. For kid, okay. All right. I just don't remember that. Okay, thank you. Bye. No, just the summer class, we approved them and because like, for example, we had a geometry class. This is what I'm thinking about. That's okay. You don't remember that either? Okay, see, all right.
Now, is this the point of the meeting when we change our meeting in June? So it's not the same evening as graduation? Uh, yes, I propose we change it to June 14th. We talked about it, but we didn't officially do it. So I guess this is the time we officially do it. Flag day. So bring a flag. Okay. So we'll flag it as a change. Thank you.
I don't know what the procedure is with, I think we, I, I don't know, we don't have to make a motion, do we? Yeah. Mike Attenasio, if he's still listening out.
We don't have, you don't have to make a motion. It will likely become a special meeting. I have to check on how many days out it is without having, with it maintaining the budget, the board meeting calendar schedule, but I will I'll get, but it does not require a vote. Thank you.
I hope it's not Laura.
So can we commit to a Monday meeting with two items on the agenda?
Michael, how quick or how much in advance do we have to announce a special meeting? It would have to be tomorrow before the town hall closes at about four, so probably like 3:30 maximum for I will call you in the morning to arrange this. Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Ms. Hirsch asked about the two items. It would be our, our working groups recommendations and also municipal improvement for CMS.
Thank you. Kathleen.
On Monday, you, I mean, I'm sure you remember you have the community service awards, right? So those are five? Okay, so then they go to typically a 6:30 or so, right? So I don't know if you want to do it right after that is my point on Monday, seven o'clock or something like that.
Yep, we'll work on that tomorrow.
And Kathleen's already offered to order the food.
Nice, again.
Well, about the overeats.
And for the May meeting, because of the Harpoon Club, we're changing that. I'm just kidding. Look at Kathleen, she got angry at me. All right, Michael, we can't go to the Harpoon Club meeting. This is because we have a Board of Ed meeting. Yes. We tried to, but I was, it was unpopular.
We want to come.
I've been here on my anniversary and my birthday. So at some point or time, you could miss me.
If we, if we change the meeting, we want to go.
Yeah, it's a Title IX issue, so. Yeah, it's a Title IX issue, so we're welcome, we'll go if you want.
So I think, I'm sorry about the time, everybody. I think Laura, it's time for a motion from you.
Motion to adjourn.
Christina?
So did we agree we're meeting on Monday?
We are going to talk about it tomorrow.
Because we're gonna have to talk quickly. That's why I'm saying, like, do you want to get a sense of.
Michael said by town.
No, 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 no. Availability.
Sense of.
In the room. Sense of the room.
Sense of the room.
If, if you can make, if you can make Monday.
If you could make Monday, put your hand up.
Can we be virtual or do we have to do?
Virtual. Or hybrid, whatever it is, you could be on the TV screen. We'll figure it out. Talk to Michael about that tomorrow. The availability is here. Alright, we're good.
But it might. It actually might be kind of better to be remote if you're, just simply because you can have, at least I can have big screens up of all this stuff. I have big screens.
Okay, ready for that motion? I'll second it. All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Very productive meeting.